Tessie? So it's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everyone to Doraville Town Hall, City Council Candidates Forum. My name is Dave Beers. I'm an unincorporated DeKalb County resident, live about 300 feet outside the city limits. The success of the city's been important to me. I've lived there for 18 years. This meeting's going to be a town hall format, which is going to be mostly audience questions and candidates' responses. A two-hour meeting altogether from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. This room will be available until 9:30, should any candidates or citizens want to stick around and talk amongst yourselves. The program's in three parts. The first part will be up to a two-minute opening statement by each candidate. I'm going to draw our timekeeper, draw a number, a piece of paper out of his hat, it's got a number, there's eight pieces in there, if we draw eight, we'll drop it. But each, starting with one through seven, whoever gets the number will be the first speaker, and then going down to the right, that'll be the second, the third, the fourth, and so on, and if we have to return to this end and finish up. Mark Blums, our timekeeper, you want to introduce yourself briefly?
I've lived nearby, been in DeKalb County for nearly 30 years, happy to be here.
Mark's going to give everybody a 15-second warning on their two-minute opening. Go ahead and show them what they'll be looking at, and maybe give the sign at zero, and if you're in the middle of a sentence, when he gives that sign, certainly complete it. Please no run-on sentences, and should you go 10 seconds over, he'll probably speak The second main part of the program, it will be questions and answers from the audience members. I'll try to pick members randomly at large. Ben Crawford or Susan will bring the mic to the audience member that's selected to answer a question. They'll direct a question to one of the candidates. Some notes on questions. Questions should minimize exposition on the part of the person making the question. We want direct and brief comments. No multi-part questions. The questions need to be germane to Doraville City Government as it relates to the City Council. Please try to avoid duplicative questions. We want to cover as many different subject areas as we can. One question per person. I'm not going to call on a person a second time unless in the unlikely event, everybody that wants to ask a question gets to ask a question. Any noncompliant or inappropriate questions will be cut off, and the candidates won't answer those. As far as the questions go, you'll have, the person to whom the question is directed will have one minute to respond to that, and then everybody else will have up to 30 seconds to respond, and we'll follow the same order we do on the opening statements. So for instance, if the question was directed to you, Mr. Chubb, you would have one minute to respond, then Tim, and then down the list. Does everybody kind of understand the order we're going to go in? Okay. I know that seems like a short amount of time for questions and answers, but the purpose of that is we've got a good turnout on the candidates, almost everyone, and we want a lot of people to be able to ask a lot of questions. The timing situation will be the same as the opening statement. He's going to give you a 10-second warning on this because it's a shorter duration. The finger across the net when you're at zero, and he'll speak up at 10 seconds over. Mark, if you would, also, or somebody bring your attention when we get about to 8:40, because the third part of the program will be a closing statement, two minutes, and it'll follow the exact same order that the opening statement was. Whoever goes first on the opening statement will go first on the closing statement, and then you'll just go down the line. Lastly, decorum's important. This is a town hall candidate forum, it's not a campaign rally. Please no audience verbalization of opposition or support for any candidates. All these candidates do deserve applause for the fact that they're putting themselves out here, they're willing to serve you, but we ask that you please hold all applause to the very end of the last closing statement. So with that, shake these up a little bit. Pick one, and you can show the audience, open it up and show the audience whatever number it was.
The number is three.
So that's you, Mr. Chubb.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to thank the people for putting on this event.
One 10-second wait. Now go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank the people for putting on this event. My name is Dennis Chubb, and I'm running for the District One Council seat, representing the Tilly Mill and the Winters Chapel area. I was born in 1954 and raised on Oakmont Avenue in Gordon Heights. I walked elementary school and middle school and high school with me and Bass passing in what was called Stewart's Lake. It was, a lot of people will remember that, on Chestnut Drive. It was then called Central Avenue. I watched the city grow from a two-lane Buford Highway till its present. My mother now was a city clerk for more than 20 years and retired from Doraville. These were wonderful times until a life-changing experience at the age of 18, riding my motorcycle, I was struck and run over by a drunk driver in a truck. Three years of hospitals to mend broken bones, skin grafts, et cetera, I was sent to the Franklin Delano Roosevelt of Warm Springs Hospital. There I learned to use my hands, my arms, and my legs again. I made the decision then to dust off my pants and move forward instead of a life of disability. You make your own tomorrows. I ran a small business, played lead guitar and all, when I had hair, and I saw promise for a better tomorrow. I worked 25 years as the Animal Control Department head, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, on call. As an ordinary citizen, I would like to be treated as I would like to treat others, to listen to the people that you represent, to have an open mind and to do the best.
Time's up.
Hello, I'm Tim Snyder. I'm a 30-year resident of this area and a 17-year resident of Doraville. Turn this thing off. Maybe they've got a trick, huh? So yes, 30-year area resident, 17 years here in Doraville and live presently in Northwoods. Been active in the community for about the last decade. Love the area, the neighborhood, would love to see it grow, would definitely be willing to work in any way possible to make that happen, and I'm excited about the prospect of serving the community and everybody here tonight, and would like to thank all of you for being here. I think that apathy is the one thing that kills cities fast as anything else, and you all certainly are not empathetic, so thank you very much for being here. And that's really about it. I just, I love Doraville, love the city, I think it has lots of potential, don't understand why we're not the hottest property in the area, and maybe we can work on that and change that a little bit. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steffi Kuntz, and I'm running for City Council in District Three of the Oakley area. I've lived in Doraville for over 30 years, been a small business owner, then managed two different car repair shops for the next 25 years. I was then the church administrator over at Church of New Covenant over in Northwoods for about five years. I'm presently on the Board of Directors of the Presbyterian Greater Atlanta, where we manage a $15 million budget. Since my retirement, I've been doing a lot of volunteer work, mostly with the kids at Cary Reynolds in an after-school tutoring program. My years of experience running small businesses, coupled with managing a nonprofit for five years, gives me a real understanding of what a business needs from the city to succeed. It also gives me the experience in finance, cost savings, and budgeting that will help me be a good council member. I believe government should operate a lot like a nonprofit, keeping enough reserves for operating capital while being good stewards of the money we are tasked with distributing to various projects. Being forward-thinking while at the same time thinking responsibly about what makes sense for today's needs. I'm a person of action, and will make sure we start and complete projects instead of just planning and talking about them. I've been listening to hundreds of residents over the last six weeks and feel I have a solid grasp on what the real concerns are for the majority of residents. I hope by the end of tonight, you will agree with my common sense approach to our future and will vote for me on November 7. Thank you.
My name's Joseph Geierman, and I want to represent you in the District Two City Council seat. I've lived in Doraville since 2001. Like many of you, I moved here because of the convenient location. Over the years, however, I've come to love the city for its neighborhoods, for its people, and for its potential. I've served our community here in a number of ways, serving on the 20-year Conference of Plan Committee, as well as currently serving on the Planning Commission, and until very recently, I was president of the Northwoods Area Neighborhood Association. In addition to my service to the community, I also have a successful career as Director of Real Estate and Facilities at Troutman Sanders, which is a large law firm based in Atlanta. In that role, I manage a portfolio of 800,000 square feet across 16 offices and with an annual operating budget of about $15 million a year. Also, I've been president of the International Facility Management Association's Atlanta Chapter and our Legal Industry Council, which is all to say that I've got a lot of experience with organizations, with doing things in organizations, and with leading organizations. I'm running because we're at a critical point in our city's history. The people we elect today are going to have a major impact on the way our city looks and how it operates for years to come. They'll be critical in deciding whether Doraville continues to lag behind or whether we actually move forward and become a leader in the region. In office, there's some key things I'll focus on. These include bringing our zoning and permitting processes into line with those of our neighbors, improving the way the city communicates with its residents, and clamping down on non-scrupulous landlords. Most importantly, integrating developments like Assembly and Nexus into our city through infrastructure improvement. I look forward to talking with you about this in the coming discussion. Thanks.
I don't like to stand when I speak. My name is Stuart Anderson. As a 42-year adorable resident, I'm running for office because I have a vision for what I consider to be one of the most promising properties in Atlanta, Doraville, Georgia. I apologize if some of my statements tonight are negative, but if I were pleased or satisfied with city progress, I wouldn't be running for office. Some of my qualifications for this are: I was chairman of Doraville's first permanent Planning Commission; I have consulted on city ordinances and helped edit the city's employee handbook; I graduated from A R C Planning Academy with further classes in continued studies of planning and watershed management, accumulating AICP points, American Institute of Certified Planners; I crafted the Planning Commission bylaws; was on the Comprehensive Plan and LCC committees; did the original design for the Halpern Park and kept it from becoming a huge semi-pro soccer facility that would have been extremely detrimental to the adjacent neighborhoods. More on this later, perhaps. I resigned from the Planning Commission to pursue and promote a city-initiated rezoning in the area we call the Tank Farm that would have made the Chicopee, Winters Chapel, Tilly Mill area safer and provided some safeguards for the homeowners and businesses' insurance rates. Questionable politics kept this from happening. I will continue efforts to pursue a more citizen and business-friendly policy notification of notification for those affected or proposed to be affected by actions of the city. I reference Pam Fleming's resolution from 2007. I attend all City Council meetings, most of the Planning Commission and E D A meetings. As to management, I own three successful businesses. I am, at this point, Stuart Anderson, DBA Cycle Racing, DBA's that does business as, managed and produced, controlled ER.
Time's up.
I'm going to stand, wherever you hear me. So as you know, I'm Robert Patrick. I've been a resident of the city of Doraville for about 12, last 12, 13 years. In that time, I've worked at another municipality in their planning department, so I have 11 years of work experience dealing with permitting processes, dealing with rezonings, dealing with development questions that come in, everything from business licenses to signed permits to what are the zoning conditions that were buried in a case from 20 years ago. I obviously, as you've seen, have a family of five, me and my wife, my three children. We have enjoyed living in Doraville during the time I've been here, five years of which I've been a councilperson. In that time, we have had the opportunity to watch the GM site get demolished and start the new construction processes on that. We have put in a zoning code to help guide the redevelopment of that property as well as the Kmart property. We have had the opportunity to work on paving streets, fixing potholes, repairing sidewalks, and doing a variety of other things really to protect the neighborhoods. And from my perspective, the real issue is protecting the neighborhoods to make sure that we can enjoy what we have right now, as well as encouraging businesses to come into Doraville, good businesses that we want to have here, so we can shop there or even possibly have a career at local businesses. If re-elected, I'll continue to do the same work that we have. It's been a great experience going around for the election. It's a great opportunity to hear what residents say what we've gotten right and what we have not gotten right on, and another opportunity to keep on working on improving the city is what I'm looking forward to, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lee Flyer, and I'm running for District Three. Really looking forward to the opportunity to serve the city. I've lived here for 23 years. I love the city very much. I particularly have enjoyed the campaign because it's given me an opportunity to go around and meet some people that I didn't know existed, and that are, I think just about every day that I've met somebody that, you know, I was so happy that I had the opportunity to meet them. I make my career as a software developer. I'm Director of Database Technologies at Venue Incorporated, which is a software company that manages software for corporate training. We have huge clients like GE and Philips that I deal with every day with clients around the world, and we're responsible for safeguarding their data and their money and all sorts of things, so I have a lot of experience in business. I've been doing that for a long time. I'm also a musician. I play in several local rock and roll bands, and so I have a kind of cross-disciplinary thing going on there. I'm an avid gardener, I'm an avid environmentalist, I'm certified in permaculture, which is an environmental design science, and I've been kind of an urban planning student for all out of my life. It's just something that really fascinates me, so I'm kind of a big-picture thinker. I like to always be thinking ahead, five or 10 years. Most of the time, people tend to concentrate on what's in front of us right now. I'm trying to look at all the moving parts and see what's going to happen, and try to make decisions based on that, and also to be based on factual information whenever possible. I really thank you for allowing me to be here, and I look forward to trying to bring together people to find some common ground who maybe don't always agree on everything because I think we all want similar things. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. I do want to mention a housekeeping matter I overlooked at the beginning. Please turn off any cell phones, and I'm not trying to single out anybody with that. I sincerely overlook saying that. So with that, we're going to move on to the question and answer portion. Dan or Susan's going to take the mic. I'll just probably be pointing at people that raise their hands. So with that, hands for someone that would like to ask a question. You were the very first handoff in the back, so.
I can shout if you'd like. I don't have a microphone. I'm the youngest child, so I can shout. Hi, I'm Chris Chau. I live in Northwoods. I live with my wife and have a newborn son. I missed the first three introductions, but I was hoping some of you could, I'm the youngest person here, fill in a little bit more about schools in Doraville and where they are and where they're going to be going.
If you would, pick the candidate you would like to.
Oh, I apologize, I missed that.
Answer the question first, that's all. They're all going to get an opportunity.
Oh, okay. Well, let's start on the left with Robert. Thank you.
I hope it's okay if I sit this time. Schools in Doraville, you know, that is a priority for everybody. I have three children, and my wife and I have obviously made the decision, we have, for school for our children. At the end of the day, the trickiness is, is that it's the Board of Education, and we have tried in the past, in my opinion, to work with them on some other projects, and I'd like to continue working with them on some other projects, such as investments in the parks so that our residents have access to parks. But the issue ultimately at the end of the day is, is do they want to work with us? And I'm not sure if that's the case. That said, there's plenty of opportunity, if you look at some of the residents that we have here with their education and their backgrounds in the working world, to reach out and help as student teachers, helping with reading, helping with math after school, and I think that's a great opportunity for the city to get together and try and encourage this kind of tapping of our resources to work with the schools.
This is actually, my mom is a retired teacher after 43 years, and she has a lot of experience with the kinds of things that we're dealing with in Doraville. As Robert was just saying, we don't control the schools directly, but there are certainly things that we can do. I think it's going to require a sort of a task force, if you will. It's going to require, you know, a lot of residents to get together and work together to deal with the county because showing up and complaining at meetings is not particularly constructive. They have to feel like they have a stake in what's happening, and we have a stake in what's happening.
30 seconds.
Okay. But yeah, that's what I would advocate, that we come together as a city to work with the county on that.
I agree, I agree wholeheartedly. The problem that we have is, the city wants, I mean, the city needs the children for the schools, and the county does whatever it wants to do. Until we can get together and push that county back into the right area, it's going to take a lot more than just yelling and screaming, so.
I'm guessing we're all going to be in agreeance with this. It is a county problem that needs to be addressed, but I do think that if, as residents, it was something that was important to us, and we all joined hands and made a lot of noise about it, we may actually get the funding that we want for our schools, or we would get the attention that we need to build better schools, get rid of some of the portables over at Cary Reynolds.
I actually disagree. I think it's the city's responsibility to organize the citizens into a common voice and help educate the parents of how the school system here works. There's a lot of people in the city that don't understand it, and if I'm elected, I would be pushing the city to be involved in this process.
I think it's a little bit of a chicken-and-the-egg problem because our home values are low because of the school district, which then we have low home values, and the school district we get is probably of lower quality than some of our neighboring richer cities. I do think we need to look at development and really focus on what can we do to make Doraville home values increase and also have higher-value businesses here because I think that will start attracting the people who might overlook the other school district-related things, and then those people will probably have more of a voice to push forward and improve the school district. So you've got to start somewhere.
Thank you. It's very interesting. My wife was a college professor, English professor, and so, as well as my own education. But I've worked with former City Council people about charter schools and theme schools, and given them information and read myself. I've had people quit work to come to work with me pro bono because I am known as a teacher. And that's, so schools are difficult because they are an entity unto themselves, our school system, it's a financial situation that is difficult. Thank you.
Ready for a second question? The gentleman in the white hat.
I'm Terry Greenberg. I'm a 33-year resident. I live on Addison, and I think one of the things that's most pertinent to the city is that our city manager lives in this city. So if elected, would you propose that the city manager who's hired live permanently in Doraville so they can see what's going on? I'll give it to Tim.
Great question. I think that would be a little difficult to mandate. We may want to work and make the city so desirable that any city manager would want to live here as opposed to John's Creek or wherever. I understand why you might want to have a city manager live here because they would probably be more in tune with what's happening and more likely to address the problems. As they rose, I think it would be very difficult to stipulate that at this point. I think we ought to work harder at making it a place where people want to live without having to ask them.
I actually agree that I would want to see a city manager that would actually want to live here if they want to manage the city, and not somebody that doesn't like the city of Doraville but wants to make their living here. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I would like the city manager to live here, sure, but I also want to get the best person for the job, and I'm not sure that we're necessarily going to get the absolute best person if we mandate that they sell their house in Atlanta or bucket or wherever they live and tell them, "You need to live in Doraville." So I would love for Doraville to be a place where everyone's dying to live, and I hope that we can get there someday, but until then, I would not want to put any restrictions on where people who work for the city can live.
Interesting. I agree, Mr. Greenberg. It would be very good if we could have the city manager live here. I'm for having all sorts of employees live here. It adds context and content to our city itself. It is difficult because we are only 10,000 people to find high-quality educated people to do this, to do the job, but I'm for having all sorts of levels of our employees live here. Thank you.
Like Tim and actually like Joseph had said, I would want to have it there. It's a desirable place to live, and I think we're getting there. But to mandate it at this time, we may not have the pool of people that actually want to be employees here, and I think that it's a goal to have, and we're going to get there, but not just yet.
Yeah, I agree. I would love to have our employees live here, as many of them as possible, especially at high levels like manager, but I do think it's the most important thing right now to get the person who's the most qualified for the job. And that doesn't mean they hate living here, or they don't want to live here, or they might not live here in five or 10 years, but I think we just need to focus on how they're going to serve the city regardless of whether they live here, unless we happen to get that magical unicorn candidate who has the perfect qualifications and lives here, or wants to live here, or we can entice them to move here. I'm pretty good at enticing people to move here, by the way. I'm pretty good at enticing people to move here, by the way.
I agree. It's a decision that generally has to be made for the city, for, to have the people that live here. I would imagine I would like that better than, and, I'm sorry.
I apologize for my lateness. I didn't hear the questions, so I'm just going to pass them back, and then you can come back to me. That's okay.
All right. So we've got all eight candidates here. What we're briefly, this topic is just a question and answer. The candidate who the question is directed at gets 60 seconds. And we go down in order, and everybody else gets 30 seconds also to either respond or give their opinion or viewpoint. So we're ready for our third question. The lady with the black blouse.
Tracy Miller, living in Allison Drive, Northwoods. And I'll direct this question to Joseph. I'd like to ask about improvements to the neighborhood. I'm not sure if this applies to all the other neighborhoods around Doraville. I don't know of these other areas. But I've noticed, at least in Northwoods, there have been some improvements made that were never really run by the neighbors. And these improvements, to me, have not been improvements. I do not appreciate having a tornado horn across from a house in my neighborhood that goes off usually when I'm on a conference call, working. And ditches dug in parks for seemingly no reason. Curbs that are too narrow for cars to turn into the neighborhood that are constantly hitting the curb, and the street lights. Okay, I'm wiping it out. So there's all these different improvements that are not really being improved. So how would you address that as far as the citizens and the council are concerned?
So I agree. I think this is a problem. It's a problem in Northwoods. It's also a problem in Oak Cliff and in other neighborhoods, because the city has done a lot of things, and I think that they've got good intentions behind them in terms of, "Hey, that sounds great. Let's put in a tornado siren," or, "Hey, that sounds great. Let's narrow the road or make it zigzag on Oak Cliff." But then the next step is to involve the citizens and get their input, and what's missing is really, whatever, you know, I know that I've talked to people at the city, and they say we have gotten citizen input, but when I talk to people who actually live in these neighborhoods, they have not actually talked to anyone or didn't know that this was about to happen. So the city needs to do a better job of outreach, whether it's, you know, instituting text messaging, building an app, like calling everybody, robo-calling them, letting them know, because it's critical that we let them know. And if we do send out information, it can't be the wrong information, like the information about the sirens. That was ridiculous. So, thank you.
Very good answer. Indeed, transparency and communication. I'm for sending out notices. If we have cell phones, we can ping the citizens. But in the, we haven't had committees that should have been had, should have been formed. They've been perhaps the same people all the time, but we haven't had, to my knowledge, we haven't had the outreach that's necessary to make those kind of decisions and get the input for some of these kind of things. Thank you.
You ready? Go ahead.
I'm ready, yeah. So those are, thank you for your points. I appreciate you calling those out. As one of the council members that was involved in this, you know, that's sort of a continuing drama dilemma that we have, which is, how do we reach out to the residents? And one of the ways that we had tried, or I've tried while being there, was the video system for videotaping mayor and council minutes. Our agendas are now online and accessible for the residents. We have tried in the past mailers, and even that did not, okay, even that did not reach all the residents. So it's sort of a tricky thing. Now, technology was mentioned. An app would be a great way. One of the things that I'd seen at our GMA meeting was. I will stop.
Yeah, I've been hearing that a lot, too, and that's kind of a strong suit of mine is communications. And even, I really appreciate the fact that we have the online council meetings and so forth, but even with that, there are a lot of people who can't, who don't have time to watch the whole thing and don't necessarily, you know, know exactly what's going on, even with that. So I would really like to put the focus on better communications with residents and with businesses about how, you know, what's going on in Doraville and, you know, for businesses.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. So, yeah, I agree that it's something we need to improve on, and I think I have some good thoughts.
Yes, better communication is what Doraville, I believe, needs. The way to get there is possibly by having more than one meeting, I'm not sure. We have to at least get together and try to figure this thing out in that respect.
I would say with social media being so present in our life right now, I think that if we have like a social media app that we can follow, like Instagram, there's a tool on there you can actually use, and you can actually post a question to the residents of Doraville, and they can say yes or no, and vote on these changes, and kind of decide from there.
I want to thank Tracy for bringing that up. I was very successful in the past by doing an online survey where the residents could voice their opinions. And I think that's another way of helping people be involved and break the cycle of apathy. So I would say more online surveys or more immediate ways for people to respond to these questions as they arise.
Yeah, when I was out campaigning, it was something I constantly heard, was people saying that they didn't feel they had any input in what was going on, and they were surprised by a lot of these projects that just sprung up. And I think something like a postcard, if you're going to spend $500,000, you can spend $500, send out some postcards, and then have an online survey.
So we're ready for another question. Lady in the room.
I'm Abby Tucker. I live in Northwoods. I wondered what your vision for the future is. How would you like to see the city look five years from now with all the development? Why don't we start with Stuart?
Thank you, Abby. I appreciate that. As a planner, I certainly want to see the downtown Park Avenue rectangle developed. I don't want to sell, our planner wants to sell some land in there. It's a mistake that we'd made with the GM plant. We hadn't asked for conditions when we gave the zoning for the GM plant or for the Nexus. We have squandered some possibilities. I definitely want to enhance and develop our Park Avenue rectangle, where the city council is, where the city hall is, I should say. And that's one of our last possible vestiges to bring the four different cities that we have. We have four cities divided: Northwoods, Oak Cliff, Tilly Mill, and Winters Chapel. We need to bring these together, and by having, by developing that downtown is the only way I can see having that happen. Thank you.
I'm going to say this in a minute. What I would like to see in the next five years is to have our city more walkable, so that the residents can get from their homes to our parks, be those parks for your kids, parks to just enjoy, or a dog park. I'd also like to see connectivity for all the neighborhoods, ultimately towards the GM site. That opportunity is something that can really help all the neighborhoods grow, and that is, that is something that, you know, as we move forward with the development activities, we have the potential to grow this place.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds. Anyway, but ultimately, you know, neighborhoods are for the residents, it's for the people. And so the plans for redeveloping the city, improving the city, they've all been well discussed through all of our different meetings. And the objective really in my mind is, is what is it going to look good for our residents? And that's always been the first thought on my mind, what keeps us safe in our neighborhoods, so that we can go out to our parks, so that we can go out and shop in our neighborhoods. And I've been told my time's up.
Five years from now, I don't know if it'll be, if this will all happen in five years, but I really, I like our comprehensive plan, which did have a lot of citizen input. And I'd really like to see development happening at the GM site. I'd like to see some redevelopment happening on the Beaufort-Howard corridor and in the city town center. Certainly, I'd like to see more green space. I'd like to see, I do want to see more walkable areas and a lot more connectivity between the neighborhoods, and also between the neighborhoods and the assembly. We don't want to have that be sort of at some little separate thing, and everything else's, you know, benefits them, or it doesn't benefit us. I want to see lots of public space in there, you know, nice streets and sidewalks and parks and that sort of thing, and a place for everyone in the community, no matter what walk of life you are. I'd like to see everybody be able to live in the community and have a stake in the community.
I agree. This would be a great move forward. One of the other things is at least no more car lots. I'm afraid we've got enough car lots in the city. And just moving towards to better parks would be fantastic, yes.
I would say five years from now, I would like to see everyone that's sitting in this room, I would like to see everyone's concerns met. Like, whatever your concern is, five years from now, met or working towards that goal.
Next five years, though I'm very pro-business, I think in the next five years, I would really like to see this city and this council value its location and its neighborhoods. I think if we don't have strong neighborhoods and people that want to live here, you're not going to have the strong business that you desire. It's a lockstep thing. So I would say let's concentrate on our neighborhoods and seeing if we can attract an educated or affluent group that will bring us the services that we all desire.
What I'd like to see in the next five years is Doraville actively search out a new anchor for the city. The GM plant used to be what anchored the city together, and when it left, the city lost what was holding it together. Whether it's Amazon, or Mercedes-Benz, or some other company, the city needs to be actively headhunting a new anchor to bring everything into focus for the development of the GM property.
I think the value of our location is really the place that we are in metro Atlanta, and that's the reason a lot of us moved here, and that's the reason the businesses will move here. And what I hope for in five years is that we have a broader tax base, and that we're able to do more of the infrastructure improvements that we need in our neighborhoods, because that's the way that we're going to really thrive as a city. So my hope for five years from now is really seeing us doing well on the business side, because that's what will allow us to do well on the neighborhood side.
Ready for another question? Lady in the room.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Joski, and my question is this. It's about our form of government, and what do you perceive our form of government to be? And please describe in detail the roles of the mayor, the city manager, and the council. And this is directed to Tim.
Thank you, Tim. The type of government that our charter says that we have is a council, city manager form of government, with a part-time serving of mayor. The council is the legislative body. They make the important decisions. The city manager answers to the city council and follows council's desires. The mayor then is the figurehead and break ties, run our meetings. And I don't know how else to say it, I think we just have, we have a council, city manager form of government.
I feel the same way as Tim, that the, from my understanding, is the city council makes the rules, the city manager's supposed to implement what we decide, and the mayor is there to greet people, to run the meetings, and to break ties. And I think the city council is the people listening to the residents that needs to be making the decisions.
We did vote in a city manager form of government. I think that city council has gotten too involved in the weeds of management issues, and as a result, we don't have a lot of positions filled right now in our city government. So, yes, I agree, we have a city manager form of government. We need a city manager, and that should be top priority of everyone who's going to be elected on city council, or who is on city council now.
That's an excellent question. It's one of my agenda items. I have 24 agenda items if I'm elected. My thoughts are to consult the charter. Our mayor is an ambassador to other cities and to counties and to developers. The city manager, I want to look at the charter, and I want to take some of the control back to the city council as far as HR, as far as selecting department heads, certainly not down into the employees, but we need some control as a city council, as a city council. Thank you.
So I think really the question, as someone who works in government, my perspective is this, do we work well together? And if we work well together, then the issues of, you know, the council disagreeing or agreeing, and how the city manager works in that dialogue are already handled. And so from my perspective, the council should focus in on policy. We should try and collaborate on a lot of issues, as many issues as possible. That does mean bringing the mayor in on those conversations. That position is an elected official representing the city. And as far as the city manager goes, that's the person who implements the will of the council. So we listen to you guys, get direction from you guys, talk amongst ourselves to work out an agreement, and then have the city manager implement. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. The city council is basically, we set policy based on the input from the people who elect us, and the mayor is, besides being the person to set the agenda and break ties at meetings, the mayor does outreach, is kind of, as Robert said, the ambassador for the city, goes out and tries to attract businesses and so forth to come here. And the city manager is the person who implements the policies that we set, and I think it's a top priority to have a qualified city manager, a qualified permanent finance manager, and that we need to then let, you know, hire good professionals and let them do their jobs, and only take control if there's a problem that we see, or they're not meeting, I think, the policy goals.
I agree wholeheartedly with the assumption. Yes.
I'm just going to piggyback on what he said. I totally agree with him.
Ready for another question? Lady in the room.
Okay, we have, I'm on the planning commission, and we have many businesses wanting to come in here. How would you, any of you, attract resident-friendly businesses? Or do you have any kind of plan at all for doing that? You can start. With Lee.
Yeah, I think the key to attracting resident-friendly businesses is to have more residents, because right now we don't really have enough to attract some of the people who want to come in. There are also, in some cases, we're competing with other cities over tax breaks and things like that, and that's the reason that they don't necessarily come in. I think that quality businesses really depend on, you know, having kind of a synergy with, there's got to be a commitment to residential development, and there's got to be a commitment to, as was referenced earlier, some anchor businesses who can come in and start really kickstarting the revenue, so we can fund the infrastructure to build more residential and some of this other stuff. It's kind of a lot of moving parts, and sometimes it's a game of chicken where. It's kind of a lot of moving parts, and sometimes it's a game of chicken where, you know, developer says, "Well, I don't want to build this store unless there's somebody who people are going to live near here," and the residential builders are saying, "We don't want to build near here if there's no retail or nothing for the citizens." So you kind of have to get it all moving at the same time, and that's really what I would want to focus on doing.
I would take the old saying, build it and they will come. Build something good, build something needed, and the population will explode. I believe this is the way to do it.
I think it has to make sense for both parties, not just the business side of it, but the residents as well. Like, the residents have to want this business there. You can't just build it and then have it just show up. Then you'll have residents going outside of Doraville to support other businesses.
I think in order to attract resident-friendly businesses, you first need to have rooftops, that's what they're looking for. So you need to have homeownership, and you need to have a certain amount of disposable income available. And when you have rooftops and people that have money to spend, those businesses will come, but they're not going to come, that's what they're looking for, and if you don't have those people. So we need to actively attract the people that we want to live here that will give us the rooftops that businesses are looking for.
I think the question Susan was asking, she's saying there's plenty of businesses that are coming here, and they're having problems getting established here. And in that case, I think a lot of it has to do with the permitting process, and like the sign ordinance and some of these other ordinances, it takes 30, 45, 60 days to even get something like a simple sign approved. And I think that's something they fight with trying to get established here. It needs to be, how can I think of a word? Streamlined, that's it.
Thanks. So I serve on the planning commission too. I think that we need to, we need to make sure that our zoning is in line with our comprehensive plan. I think that's a key thing, and I think that's something the council is working on, but I think that not everything is in place yet. I also agree that we need to make sure our permitting processes are competitive with those of the cities around us, because we're competing for those desirable businesses. And, you know, I don't know that we're doing as good of a job as we should in the getting your name out there competition. So we need to really focus on making Doraville be perceived as a better place to do business as well.
The term rooftops has been used here. It's not just rooftops, it's ownership. We are 60% rental, nobody's mentioned that, and it's difficult for businesses to feel confident to spend money in a situation in a municipality that is 60% rental. It's, we don't, we haven't reached out through publication to try and attract business. We've tried to use incentivizing for businesses, the GM plant with no conditions, Kmart with no conditions. If we have a situation that we can control, our development, then we can proceed. Thank you.
So we actually already have the plan in place. It's called the Comprehensive Plan and Beaufort Highway LCI Plan, and that's where the city government paid to reach out to you, the residents, engage with the property owners, to find out what businesses you do want to have here, what activities do you want to see in the city. And so from my perspective, we have the plan, now it's time to implement that plan. You know, we do have code revisions that need to happen. A joke that I have in some other cities is that we have a very nice code for 1990, but we don't have a code that addresses 2010, 2020. And then final statement would be, we do have conditions in place on the Assembly and the Nexus developments. They are thick documents, they are great readings if you're a planner, and I love reading planning documents, but we do have things in there, and that's always been a concern of the council, is to protect the neighborhoods and ensure good quality growth in our city limits. Thank you.
Another question, gentleman in orange.
My name is, I don't think I need the microphone. My name is Andy Omen, I live here in Doraville for actually two years, or two years last week. So, a fairly new resident of Doraville. My question is this, to change subjects a little bit, all of us in this room also have another decision to make on November 7th, and that is there is a 16.7% sales tax increase on the ballot. In Doraville, I'm not pointing out Doraville, all of the cities in DeKalb County did this, they all agreed to spend 80% on sidewalks and roads and infrastructure improvement, and then 20% goes into police, to buy fire, or to buy police cars and things like that. I want to see Doraville actually spend a lot more money than 80% on streets and sidewalks and walkability and our parks and things like that. So what I'd like to give from you tonight is the new, potential new council members, is would you agree to spend 100% of the SPOSS, if it passes and if you're elected, on streets and sidewalks, and use more traditional funding mechanisms to buy police cars?
Here's a question. A person is...
I'm glad you brought that up. The TESPOS money, I've seen the list of projects that Doraville is, got listed, and I think from talking to residents, what they're complaining about is, "When is this pothole going to fix, get fixed on my street? When is these curbs going to get fixed? When is these basic infrastructure problems going to get repaired?" And I've seen nothing in the city's plan on addressing just these basic repairs. What they're talking about is spending one of three and a half million dollars in a pedestrian project over on the edge of town, and spending another million dollars on traffic calming on Chestnut Drive, which nobody that I've talked to is interested in having the thing done like on Oak Cliff Road done on Chestnut. And the money could be spent a lot better, you could actually spend 100% of it on that, or save some of that for the police cars and still get everything done.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to get everything done from the TESPOS money, because I know that, looking at the amounts that we're actually getting, it's not a huge, huge amount. I do agree that we do need to spend it on the infrastructure, because when I talk to people, like the first thing they mention is potholes on their street or, you know, other major infrastructure things. So I would be fine with spending 100% of it on that, although I haven't looked at the budget or know exactly how many police cars we need this year, so I would need to look at that too. But it sounds good on the top face of it.
Thank you. Couple things. If we had controls in the GM plant, we wouldn't have car dealership and/or things that weren't promised to us. As far as the TESPOS goes, one of my agenda items is to talk to the GDOT and to the city of the state as far as getting 057 access to the back of the GM plant, so that we get businesses in the GM plant. Right now, we have a very difficult time with traffic congestion on Beaufort Highway and Peachtree Industrial. So we don't, we haven't been actively using our plan, and there certainly aren't controls over the GM or the Kmart. The Kmart is languishing, and we're not doing our job. Thank you.
So the question was, would we spend all of our resources from the TESPOS on transportation-related items? That's certainly something worth considering. We do have some other needs that are in the city. And what I'd like to suggest also, though, is with this money, and the TESPOS would raise about $9 million for Doraville, that money can be used to attract grants for stormwater projects, for sidewalks in our cities, for trail systems, for improvements to our road networks. So again, if we had a master plan, or if we can get a master plan put together for street enhancements or any other kind of transportation items, those dollars can be used for that. We also do have police needs in our city. We do have infrastructure investments or capital improvement investments, such as police cars, which do tend to be expensive.
Yeah, I certainly think that the TESPOS money, we should consider dedicating more of it to infrastructure, because Doraville does, as far as I know, our police department is pretty well funded, considering that we have a fairly lean budget overall, and we're also kind of reluctant to take on any financing options. So I think that's what most cities usually do when they want to fund infrastructure, because it's much more, it's much cheaper to replace things when they need replacing as opposed to waiting for something to fail and having to fix it, you know, when there's a disaster. And so I think we could use some financing on things like that as opposed to pay-as-you-go like we are now. But I would definitely look at that.
And to make it simple, I would definitely agree.
Just hearing everyone else on the panel, I think it's a common agreement that we all feel like we need to definitely invest some money in the roads and stuff, so I think between all districts, we can definitely make some people happy.
Yes, I think if the residents decided they want to spend 100% of the SPOSS money, certainly would be something we could do. And I was under the impression that we leased our police cars here in Doraville, so that might not even be an issue.
Another question, gentleman in beige. That's as close as I could get that color.
The incumbent council, the incumbent councilman said that there were plenty of zoning codes for Nexus and the Assembly. What I would like to see is anyone that's being, that would be elected, would you consider reconsidering the zoning so we would not have any more 20-acre car lots on what could be a prime piece of property that would enhance all of the values of our community? I'll start with Tim. Thank you, Steve. I would be in favor of retracting all of the zoning on the GM property tomorrow and reevaluating the zoning that's there now. Half of that property by right could be warehouses tomorrow. If the developer decides he's had enough and he wants to move, he could, he could build warehouses or us on half of it, and Billy Bubba's truck stop could be on the other half, because gas stations are allowed. I understand why they gave them wide-open zoning, because the guy said, "Well, I don't want to have to come back every time somebody comes in." But I think what we've done is we've opened the door to some pretty questionable development if Integral decides they've had enough. So right now, I think I would like to withdraw all of the zoning that was there and then zone as needed.
The issue you brought up is the main reason I decided to run for city council. I was on the comprehensive plan, and as Robert said, the city council approved it, and then the first thing I saw was they put two car dealerships in, and that was like the worst, I just can't even believe that happened. And like Tim said, if we have to retract all the zoning to protect that from happening again, I'd be 100% in favor of it.
Yeah, the car dealerships were a miss for the city. You know, I think that we need to look at what exactly happened there, because I think some special allowances were made to allow those car dealerships, and I think maybe a song and dance was made to the city council about it. So, you know, I certainly am going to be extra skeptical for any, any future song and dances like that, and I would certainly not approve any car dealerships or other car-related businesses on Assembly going forward.
Well, seem to be more or less in favor or in unison on this. I guess we can withdraw the zoning. That's a large consideration. It's like the horses out of the barn, but I'm all for reconsidering. As a planning commissioner, when I considered a situation, I always put conditions on it. I didn't say yes. I put conditions on it and forwarded it to the city council with conditions so that things would happen for the neighborhood, for the city, both residential and commercial. It's important to put conditions and enforce them. If we've got reams of this stuff that we're not using, I don't, I don't think so, I don't understand it.
So a common misconception, let me start it again.
Hold one second.
Oh, I'll take another second.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. All right. Again, the car lot was approved in that section of the GM redevelopment site for one reason, and that was to help pay for the TAD. And that TAD is the item that pays for the water and the sewer and the roads and the stormwater infrastructure that go into that site, so that that is not a cost onto the Doraville taxpayers. So, and as a planner, I'm familiar with like development activities. The one that, the two things that protect that from, or prevent that from spreading anywhere else in the development is this, there's going to be a new road that segments that off from the rest of the development, and then we have a code section or the codes that are in there basically say it's intended to be a walkable mixed-use area. And if you look at what the development pattern has been there so far, between the movie studio as well as CertaCeely mattress factory, that's a corporate office with 500 jobs that we brought to our city. So I don't advocate the throw-out-the-baby-with-a-bathwater approach. If there are problems that need to be fixed, we can do that and enforce it, but the plan is a good plan.
Yeah, this is a tough question to answer in 30 seconds, so certainly if anybody wants to talk to me, you know, or any of the other candidates after this. But yeah, I, there is zoning in place, and the car dealers, I don't obviously like them, I don't think anybody does, but we did have to bring some business in there without building all the infrastructure that we need to build in order to get the rest of the plan going. And the rest of the plan is good, so I wish it was something else besides a car dealership that was on that 20 acres, but it did bring in money to fund the rest of the project. And so, you know, that's, it's bad optics, but I think that it'll, I think it'll pay off in the long term.
I agree with it being a bad idea for more car lots, and I agree that, that the way we're doing it now, what, what...
Robert Patrick.
Robert Patrick exposed was, is a bad idea.
I would say that is definitely something that's to be reconsidered. I mean, going back to the question that was asked, five years from now, where do you see Doraville? Five years from now, do you want to see more car lots? I mean, it all depends on what the, what citizens want. Like, do you guys, what do you guys want to see five years from now? So I say it's definitely something to reconsider.
Lady in dark blue, I think. You're right there.
My name is Jessica, I live on Chestnut, and my question kind of goes to what Steph was kind of talking about a moment ago, where there's a proposal online right now to widen Chestnut and add in bike lanes and the planners in the middle of the road, and basically make it into what they've done with Oak Cliff, and I think everyone agrees it's kind of a hot mess on Oak Cliff. So my question is, are you for or against widening Chestnut to add more bike lanes or not? And I want to know why.
Can you choose a candidate to start?
Steph, you can start it.
I think this tie, this question ties into the other project. They're talking about putting that road underneath the modest station, and if they bring that into Chestnut, we're going to end up with the same problem that ended up on Oak Cliff when they brought Winter's Chapel up there with the Hugo Arango Bridge, that it turned into just a traffic, to use your term, a hot mess. And then they have to do traffic calming because they brought all this traffic up there, and it's unintended consequences of doing development without really thinking things through. They put those speed bumps on Tilly Mill, now everybody's driving down Pontiac Circle, and the people over there are like, "Our traffic's doubled, what happened? We have to be really careful about bringing in development like that, looking at it." But no, I don't want to see them spend $1.2 million doing the same thing that they did to Oak Cliff. to Oak Cliff.
So I think what they did, what happened on Oak Cliff was unfortunate largely because the people who lived there didn't know what was going on and they weren't informed about it. I disagree with Steffi on the road to, to Assembly because I think that that's a key part of what's going to make businesses want to be there because they need to have that connection to MARTA and to 85. Otherwise, the land doesn't have the same value. But I don't, I don't think that we should connect Chestnut to Park Avenue because I think that's what would cause the traffic problems in our neighborhood. And I also think that any changes on Chestnut really need to be gone over with the residents there way in depth and, and we need to make sure that we have the right, the right plan in place.
It's a complex question, complex question. The widening tends to lead to more traffic. The widening for bike lanes takes people's property away. We have a, we have a motion or a situation in the city that wants to narrow Beaufort Highway. If you, if you narrow roads, you create traffic jams and the road and the people go into the neighborhoods because it's like, it's, your GPS tells you to do that to get away from the jam. If you, if you widen for the, for the bike lane without, without modification, it's a very difficult situation to create.
I would certainly be willing to reconsider the traffic calming measures. I understand that a lot of residents have gotten upset with those. Let me say this, though. I happened to go to a GDOT transportation meeting just recently. And essentially, GDOT's plan for the metro area is to build lanes, literally sky bridges in the existing right-of-way of 285. And that's going to go from I-20 on the east side to I-20 on the west side. And their plan incorporates off-ramps or on-ramps from Dorville and from Dunwoody. We need to have a plan in place that again protects the neighborhoods. And I'm totally willing to consider any alternatives as far as anything that the residents want to do, but ultimately it's coming.
I live in Oak Cliff and so I've heard quite a few things from the neighbors on both sides. Some people really like it, some people don't like it at all. And I think that the decision about Northwoods should be left to the Northwoods residents. So I don't feel too comfortable commenting on that. I definitely think if more residents don't want it, that they shouldn't do it. And I think that when, we did have quite a lot of citizen input for the Oak Cliff project. And there were quite a few people who said they preferred what, what ended up happening to having traditional speed bumps. So that was kind of a compromise thing that, that we did. And it does put some more trees in there and stuff. So it's just, like I said, I don't feel comfortable making that decision for somebody else. It should be up to the residents to decide whether they want that.
I agree, we need to let the residents, the citizens make the decision in their own neighborhoods about what they're going to allow and what they're not going to allow.
So the young lady that asked the question, were you asking the question because I'm assuming you were very passionate about this decision that may or may not go forward, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
So my question to you would be, and I know you're not supposed to answer questions with your question, but clearly I'm not very traditional. So my question to you will be, if they can create this project without any type of mishap, something completely different from what you're actually measuring it to, would you be okay with the project going forward?
Well, of course, we'd have to look at the, with the map that they have up about the project. The proposal is online. But my real concern is that they wanted to put the bike lanes in and all this stuff and it's just kind of like, it's kind of like, I can't tell you the last time I've seen a person riding a bike down Chestnut.
Okay, I just wanted to know what the quarter was. I knew it was a quarter to that question, so I just wanted to get to the quarter. It's more so like, we're basically creating a bike lane when there's not a lot of people riding bikes, going back to him saying, six, you know, a lot of people are not really. I'm sorry.
No bikes. No bikes. Okay. Are you the guy selling the bikes? A year's. The only guy in a year is here.
I would be vehemently opposed to doing any kind of traffic calming like they did in Oak Cliff. I'm shocked. It would have been so easy to put a policeman out there. We actually could have made some money and that would have calmed that traffic pretty fast. And I will lay on the road and chain myself down before anyone does it through my neighborhood.
Hi, this is Jane Walker. I just want to ask you this. How do you feel about this? Do we have any, I just want to know what your response would be if we were called upon to have an abortion facility in Dorville? And one particular concern in the mayoral election, I received a card from one of these organizations encouraging, you know, just encouraging you to vote in the election. I thought it was mighty peculiar because it was from a whole different, not a whole different, but I mean, it was from another part of town. And not, it wasn't in Dorville, in other words, it came from out of place. And I just thought it was peculiar that they would send out, you know, information to kind of just vote in Dorville. If there was a request for an abortion facility in Dorville, you know, what would the candidates have?
So that's a, that's a really good question. There are a lot of controversial issues out there from abortion to gun control to a lot of
Can't hear you. That's why.
Apologize for that. There have been a lot of controversies or there are a lot of controversial issues that are out there. And, you know, I, I do have my own personal opinions, but my preference really at the local municipal level is to focus in on getting things done. Sort of those big national issues that easily pick people off and turn us against each other is not where I'm wanting to put my campaign, not where I've been trying to make my candidacy go. So I'm going to defer on that one, but I will say that unity with our citizens is really the primary issue. There are any number of controversial issues out there. And I just don't think as a local councilman, that fixes things like fixes our roads or helps advance the city for other bigger issues.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, you know, I have my personal opinions on that too, but I don't think that it has much to do with what I, what I would be concerned with, with the city. And I think it's more important for people to be able to work together and not become divided on issues like this when we already have enough local issues that tend to divide us. So I'm going to defer also.
As I do defer, too many problems without having to add more to, to the city.
I will say that honestly speaking, I don't have an answer for you. And I'm not even going to say hand-sugar coat it for you. I honestly don't have an answer and I hope that's okay. I'm just being honest.
I hope I give it this clear. I'm not saying how everybody feels about that. I'm saying if a facility requested a license to be in Dorville, it seems like as councilman you could, you'd have a decision to make.
As a councilperson, I'm a representative of the people in this city and I would represent their wishes and desires if the majority decided they wanted or didn't want. I would have to represent those desires. But I personally wouldn't ever try to legislate morality. It's just not what we're, we're supposed to do. But I would represent the majority of the people I represent.
Honestly, I'm not sure if they're allowed by right or not and what districts they would be allowed in. If they were allowed by right in a certain zoning district, the question would never come to us. If it did come to us, honestly, I would just assume not have one in the city because it's such a controversial business to have in the city that you'll have people out there protesting and the police will be out there and potential problems. The city's not that big. I personally would probably just say no, just to avoid all the conflict that an abortion clinic would create.
Well, I kind of agree, but I think that, you know, I would just look at what the zoning is in a particular area. If, I'm not going to put the city up for a lawsuit that we can't win or that we don't really want to fight. And, you know, I think that ultimately the postcards like the one that you got, I think sometimes those are sent by divisive organizations that are trying to cloud the issue anyway. So there's no way that would have had anything to do with a mayoral campaign. And I think that someone was really just trying to influence you by kind of throwing this third issue out into the, into the mix, which I think is unfair for whoever did that.
Good observation. What it was, was a, an effort to, they were, they were, they were polling. They were seeing what people wanted to say, what people wanted to do. They were looking for soft spots, doing polling and getting, getting opinions, big data as it were. As far as, as far as having one, or I agree with Steph, I would, it would be difficult for a small city to absorb the flak that we would get.
My question, this will go to, I'm sorry, I know, you just In reference to our city positions that are empty right now, what do you consider one of our most important positions to fill? First, for the better of the city. Cheerleader, don't be.
I think I'm going to piggyback off of what my running mate said. I mean, one of the things that was mentioned when I believe Trudy asked the question was we need a city management to be in place immediately. And I believe it was you that mentioned that. So I would say, you know, I would have to agree with him on that one. Thanks for your question.
Are you referring to anything specifically?
Let's try to answer the question. I'm sorry I let a little bit back and forth. So repeat the question.
Okay, the question is, in reference to the positions that are empty, by the way, my name's Connie Cody, I'm from Northwoods, have lived in Dorville 48 years all my life. So I've seen everything in Dorville change and had good news. Which of the positions that are open, such as the city manager, the financial officer, our permits, which of these offices do you think should be filled first so that we get our city running properly?
Well, we have an interim city manager until December 31st, correct? And I believe that we should have a city manager come January 1st, first and foremost. We need to be looking for that city manager now, not when the new council comes. It's a, it's a lengthy process and it needs to be done. That would be the most important thing in my opinion that needs to be looked at.
As far as positions we're going to be responsible for, because hopefully they don't have a city manager by the time we take office, is a position that was done away with, which is a building official. I think that's been huge that the city doesn't have a building official and we've outsourced all of the permitting, building inspections, everything like that, which is a big problem when we're fixing to do all this development. I don't understand why they did that.
I think since we had a question about the form of government and everyone agreed it was a city manager form of government, obviously the permanent city manager does make sense because that's going to add stability to the people who work at City Hall and they'll hopefully be able to attract some good people like finance director, planning director, parks director, all of the other open positions that we need. So it's all going to start from the top and then we need to fill the positions after that.
I agree with Joseph quite a bit. I was general manager for research and development for Buick Division General Motors. And if you, I'm a little bit top-down, I've worked on the floor, on electric floor. And so I've done the walk the walk, as it were. But without a city manager, I'm, I'm also the parks director and, and maintenance, but certainly the finance person. I was, I miss Lisa a lot. I'm really disappointed that she went away. She was going to be a very, very important resource for us. Thank you.
I believe the city manager's position is going to be, is going to have to be the first one that we fill. That is the priority. That is the person who sort of takes the will and direction of the council and implements it with the city staff. I think that's critically important to get that position taken care of first. I would like to say, and I'm not sure if the current interim city manager is interested, that she does have quite a, quite a, quite a background, that we would be happy to have her with, have her with us. And then just for clarification, you know, we do outsource a lot of those permitting activities, but that is not an additional cost to the taxpayer. We do have to be cautious of monies that we spend. So a percentage of the revenues that are taken in go to pay for the services that are provided through the current contractor. I'm open to in-house, but it works what we have, what we have.
Yeah, I think I'll join the chorus and say the most important thing is to get a permanent city manager in there and then followed by a city finance director. So I think that would be the top priority. I don't know whether it'll be possible for the current council to fill them because there's probably a lot of people who are sitting back waiting to see who the new council is going to be before they decide whether they want to work for us or not. So that could be a problem. But assuming that, that we can, I mean, we certainly should be out there looking for people right now and we may not be able to fill it until January, but, but that would be my top priority.
I would agree, the top priority of a city manager is very well needed for the city of Dorville.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Carol Gielman. I live at Chestnut Place in Northwoods. I'm very passionate about this question and I'd like to have Steffi begin with the answers. If you elected, will you insist mayor and council adhere to the same rules of conduct read by the city clerk to people in attendance at each council meeting? It's embarrassing for the city when a one council member publicly denounces another council member for their vote. And what would you do about a violation?
It's my understanding that the ethics committee's been put on hiatus for a while. I think that part of the problem with the city not moving forward in a timely manner has been what eyewitnesses, unprofessionalism in the city council, some of the city council members and even the city staff, the way I've been treated by them. I think that if somebody like Amazon came in and witnessed the way the city operates, the way we interact with each other, that they would leave immediately. I think, as Carol said, the, any violations like that need to be taken seriously. Ethics complaints need to be dealt with. Open records requests needs to be filled in a timely manner. I've had issues with getting open records requests filled and I think that this is a real major problem that I know if I'm elected, I'm going to be professional. I'm not going to engage in that kind of stuff.
I know what you're talking about, Carol. You know, I think that there's, there's a general combativeness on the city council right now and I think that's part of the problem. And I, I'm not sure if there's just no relationships behind the scenes or there's so much bad blood that's happened over the years that it's kind of tainted that. I think what I would strive to do myself is try to build some connections between all of the individuals who are on council. And I agree that calling someone out for their vote doesn't make sense because, you know, you might vote one way, one time, but you don't want to make an enemy and have them always vote against you. So I, I think that I would try to address that behind the scenes first before making it a big deal. But I do agree that that type of behavior is a problem.
I think we're all in agreement with this. As a crew chief on race cars, motorcycles, what you do if you disagree with the owner or the rider or the driver, you go in the trailer and work it out. You don't holler at each other and make, say, make, call names in the, in the open pits. It's incumbent on us as city council people to have relationships with the people. I can work with anybody here and I have no problem with having a discussion. I don't see any reason to have acrimonious conversation across the table. I don't see any reason to have acrimonious conversation across the table in an open setting. I think things can be handled behind the scenes. Handled behind the scenes and properly in front.
I agree that the same level of professionalism or decorum that's expected at the council diocese for the residents that are there is also the same decorum that's expected from the council members at the diocese. And I have enjoyed working with council members. We disagree, sometimes vigorously, but I would also say, you know, seven adults who are all of intentions will also always have disagreements. Even with my own family, my own wife, we disagree. She's usually right, she's mostly right. But, you know, we do disagree, and to assume that 10 and a half thousand people that live in our city are always going to agree is tough. So, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. It's a big priority, and I think a strength of mine to be able to disagree with people without being disagreeable. I think that's really an important thing for residents and for the council members. And it's something that, you know, anybody who knows me knows that I'm a pretty laid-back person. I can, you can ask me contentious questions, and I won't go flying off the handle, and I won't, we won't necessarily end up agreeing, but I try to listen respectfully to people's opinions. And I do think that being able to work together on the council is really important, and I have a lot of experience dealing with being a member of a small business team and a member of several rock bands for several years, and dealing with all the personalities there. So, I have confidence that I could do that.
I agree.
It's both of us. I think that sometimes when you disagree with someone, you can still walk away and learn something from that person's thought process. So, in any situation I'm in where someone, you know, I disagree or I agree with someone, I always want to learn from that person. Like, what was their thought process to come up to this conclusion, and how can I learn from this person? So, I think it's always a learning opportunity, disagree or not.
Thank you, Carol. I'm insulted every time that that's read, I'll just have you know, that someone would actually think that they would have to tell me ahead of time that I would have to behave, as if I was not going to. So, I don't like it, and I would do away completely with that. And I think that if the mayor and the council all acted in accordance to Robert's rules and spoke as they were representing their constituents instead of their own personal agendas, you wouldn't have that problem.
Another question?
I would like to give any and all of you this task if you are elected. Will you please find out what we're not doing, or what we're not doing right, where we cannot come up to getting things done like other cities? Other cities are getting things done just like this. They're looking beautiful, they're getting quality businesses, they're places that people want to go and be, and probably have a residence. There's something that Doraville is not doing right, or is not doing, that is leading us to standing still or going backwards. We go two or three steps forward, we go four steps backwards. I want them to find out why Doraville can't move forward like other cities as quickly.
Who should answer first?
Steph, because she's going to be in my area of the little council.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked me that, because I think one of the things, and I've witnessed this when I've been at City Hall, it's back to the lack of a building official and a permitting department in-house. These other cities have it. They are able to get things, when people want to build something, within a few days, they've got it approved, they've got people out there inspecting stuff, like bam. You go to the city of Doraville's website, and it's got a little tab there that looks real cute, that says, "Request an inspection." When you click on it, it's a blank page. I mean, you would think that somebody at the city would have noticed that the page is blank on their website. It should be, it should be able to be done online, it should be able to have online payments for any kind of permits, and it shouldn't be such a huge problem. I was there the other day, guy came in, wanted to get his occupational tax permit, they said, "I'm sorry, those people left at 2:30, you can't turn them in after 2:30." So, he had to take another day off to come down there. It's simple things like that is why people aren't coming here.
I think that's part of it. I think that we do need to streamline our operations, and we need to have more online submissions processes. I talked to a business owner who said that, you know, he, every year, has to gather the same documents and upload the exact same documents each time to basically get the certificate for his business. So, you know, once the city has it, that should be the only time that you need to upload it, and they just need to update whatever changes. I also think, though, that Doraville also needs a city council that can work together, and one of the reasons that I'm running is because I think I can work with anyone on this stage and, you know, collaborate for a better future. So, I think the other thing that we need is just a council that works better together.
Excellent question, Lynda. It's large and small. It's certainly permitting, as well as development of things like this that aren't happening. We were sold this deal here, and this is not what we're getting. So, it's both from permitting and the bottom end of this development situation, as well as how we're dealing with our developers and not dealing with them or not getting what we want from them. 057 would connect the backside of GM plant and allow us to develop. There are large issues here, as well as small issues. Thank you.
So, the question is, is why are we not moving ahead as fast as, say, Shamby or Brookhaven or Dunwoodie? Those cities sort of had a jump on us from a planning point of view, years before the Great Recession hit. And those plans pretty much all froze when the Great Recession came along. After that, the plans were already in place, and developers come along and say, "Well, what's quick and what's easy to build?" And they were already in a position ahead of us. The other thing to remember is, is the GM redevelopment site is huge, and it's huge not just in a geographic sense, but it's also huge in a finance sense, that the private sector wants to be able to invest in the city or in any redevelopment area, but they want to be able to reasonably see a return on that. And sort of the challenge is, is the GM site is just big, and it's a long-term investment that not just any developer can come in.
Yeah, I agree that as part of the problem is the permitting needs to be streamlined, and we need to relook at that. And I certainly agree that we have some challenges that some other cities don't have with the GM, because we chose to have a planned community, planned development, rather than having the land sold off piecemeal to whoever would come in and develop it. So, that's a challenge that we have. But I think another challenge, I mean, the biggest challenge is really money, you know. We're not a wealthy town, we don't have a huge tax base, the GM plant closing, you know, shrunk that even more, and we're very reluctant to take on any financing to jump-start some of this stuff. There's a pay-as-you-go attitude right now, and there is state and federal money out there, there is bond financing we could do to jump-start some of this stuff, and we're just not doing it right now. We don't have the appetite for it.
I agree.
I would say, because I'm not behind the line, I don't really have a direct answer for you, because it was such a direct question, but my assumption would be more so, we just have to put the right people in the right places and just let the domino effect take control.
That's a good question, Lynda. I personally believe that the reason why nothing's happening is because we've put all of our eggs in one basket, we've catered and bent over backwards to someone who sold us a fantasy, has no shovel-ready projects whatsoever, and we don't go out and look for other developers. I mean, because you own the property, doesn't mean you get to develop it. And that's his vision of what Doraville wants, but I don't think that was Doraville's vision of what Doraville wanted. I think we need to be looking at other development people, and say, "We have this property, what would you like to do? Could you build our vision for us?"
It's 20 kilos.
So, there's traditional ways, nope, this guy almost laughed and laughed. There's traditional ways to bring businesses in that's been discussed at length tonight. I wanted to know if you have creative or out-of-the-box ways that you want to try and bring businesses into this community? Lee Fly.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things that we could be doing. I mentioned that we could be taking on, we could finance some of the infrastructure that we need to bring some of the businesses in, because they don't want to come in if there's no sidewalks or anything, no water and sewer like there isn't on the GM. But also, I think that I'd like to see more partnering with other cities and other organizations for things like having public art, things, you know, like attracting some artist lofts and those types of businesses in here. Artists are typically, like immigrants, pretty willing to come in and sort of be pioneers and get really good businesses going that are attractive. And it's kind of like, I think that Doraville has some unique opportunities that other cities don't have, because we have a diverse population, and I think we should capitalize on that, and we don't want, we don't need to be another Dunwoodie, there's plenty of communities like that, and we should capitalize on our strengths and use that to bring people in.
Exactly, capitalize on our own strength, and build it, and then it will come, and that's my thought, I think.
I will actually go towards our home-based business, like how many businesses that we have that actually function at home, and how can we bring them out of the homes into our community, so other people can actually visit them and actually penetrate revenue.
Allow me to be selfish. I'm in the film and television business, and I would love to do some creative marketing to get people in my industry to come and set up shops all along Beaufort Highway to support film industry that is on the assembly property right now, because I think there needs to be four more sound stages over there, and we need to have camera rentals and lighting and script writers and editors and everybody all up and down Beaufort Highway, and then they can all live in Oak Cliff, and they can live in Tilly Mill, and they can live in Northwoods. I think that would be a great industry to market to.
I don't know how out-of-the-box this is, but I think it's similar to what I've done in the past when I had a business that a position was missing, that I hired a headhunter to find this person. And I feel that a lot of this goes back to that when the GM plant left, we lost the anchor, and the city hasn't actively pursued finding a replacement for it. And that's why they're having to fund all these bonds and city-funded infrastructure and all this stuff. If we got the anchor back, they would pay for all of that when they moved in.
So, I don't think we could just make things happen, or businesses won't just come here and spend a lot of money just because we ask them. But I think what we need to do is play to our strengths, which are our location, the fact that we've got Beaufort Highway, which is known for culture and for food, and the fact that we've got a lot of artists and music and things that have happened in this area. I learned recently, The Free Bird was recorded here. So, you know, we need to do a better job at promoting ourselves, and I think in doing that, that will start attracting businesses to say, "Hey, you know, that's the kind of quirky community that I want to live in." So, you know, I think that's what we need to do.
Yes, promotion is the key. I'm just going to read off a little list. I have some of the 24 agenda items that I want to pursue if I'm city council. We have, we have a problem with RR1 zoning. We're causing unsustainable building. The walking trails that we've got people spending time on the city council on are unreasonable. We don't have a drugstore. We need, we need to work with the businesses to have a chamber of commerce. Rooming house considerations need to be considered, I have a great deal of stuff written about that. Pursue Pam and Dave Chan hands and my observations about C1, C2. We're not, we're not pursuing getting our zoning correct. We need to keep our lead certification. Look up the city manager's job and other positions, so that we have, we have a proper management function. I can go on and on.
So, I think one of the best ways, two ways, really to attract creative businesses, or a creative way to attract businesses to our city, first and foremost is rooftops. We've talked about that. And over into the Tilly Mill area, we have Carver Hills Development, which is bringing in 240, I consider high-end, $400,000 and up housing units that are coming in. The other thing to do is the arts. That's a phenomenal way to attract people. The underpass at Lang Longmire, as well as that GDOT retaining wall along 285 and Beaufort Highway, as you approach Beaufort Highway, that'd be a fantastic place to put a mural. Go out and engage, we get back to working with the schools, engage with our schools, the elementary schools and the middle schools, for a mosaic on that wall. They did it Norcross, we can do it here. The other thing I would like to say is, my time's out.
Yeah, so with that, we're running to the last part of our program, which is just going to be, I'll repeat, a two-minute closing statement by each candidate to wrap things up. Actually, I need a little recollection on who gave the first statement. Okay, well, you're the first to close. I'll give you a 30-second word.
Can you make it a minute? I'd like to thank citizens of Doraville, everyone for coming to the meeting. I'd like to thank and appreciate everyone who's come to the meeting, and we have learned quite a bit about what goes on in our, in our community and our government. And it just takes all of us together to build a community, and I take up with that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Again, I want to apologize for being late. I know your time is very valuable, and I just want to say thank you guys, everyone that came out today. And thank you for your questions, very, very great questions, we got some really good ones. And at the end of the day, we're all sitting in this room for one reason, and that's Doraville. So, I say, let's make Doraville great, and come together as one, and put our best foot forward, regardless of if it's the left or the right one. Good night.
I too have really enjoyed all the questions, and I think it's great that you all came out. What you'll be doing when you vote is you'll be asking someone to serve you for the next four years. And I would suggest that you consider those candidates very carefully, that you're going to be stuck with whoever you vote for for four years. There are a lot of serious questions and problems that we need to deal with, and we need to get it right. And I don't think that anything is going to change in Doraville unless changes are made, and we're going to need to decide what changes we want to make, and who we want to represent those changes, when we want to spearhead those changes and get them done. So, I would say thank you very much, and please vote carefully on the 7th.
I'd like to close with an unintended consequence that really wasn't discussed tonight. Gentrification is a double-edged sword. While it does bring in retail and amenities that we want, it also brings in a higher cost of living and increased taxes. There are ways to welcome this development, which I am excited about happening here, without the downside of making it unaffordable for us to live here. I know right now, Doraville has plenty of housing that is affordable, and I also hear people saying our taxes are low. Some people even believe they are too low. Well, that can quickly change. But if we're vigilant and proactive about this redevelopment happens, and our property values rise, the tax burden can be kept under control, and people can continue to live in their homes. I've seen the opposite happen in other parts of Atlanta that have been gentrified, and I don't want to see that happen here. I love Doraville, and I want to stay here. It's not a good place to live, it's a great place to live. I foresee a bright future for this area. I foresee a bright future for this area, and with some careful planning, everyone here will be able to stay here and enjoy what Doraville is poised to become. I hope you share my common sense vision for the future of our city and will vote for me on November 7th. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, you guys are here because you care. You know, we're at a critical point in Doraville's history. The candidates we choose in this election are going to determine whether our city progresses or whether we fall behind our neighbors even further. We're going to need people who can work well with others, and we're also going to need people with realistic plans for solving our city's problems. Plans like auditing residential properties to see which ones have landlords that are not paying their homestead exemption, or who are claiming homestead exemption when they shouldn't be, and then collecting the homestead exemption, and then also going after them and making sure that they aren't violating any of our other laws. Also, getting assembly underway, because we need to really prioritize the development there. We need to connect that piece of property to the rest of the city through infrastructure investment, because that's what the businesses that we want to have come here are going to want to see. Also, we need to simplify our zoning and permitting processes, and we need to make Doraville an easier place to do business in, and also an easier place for homeowners to make improvements to their property. I've got the temperament. I can work with anyone else on the stage here. I've got good relationships, I think, with most of them. I'm a hard worker. I've worked hard at every job that I've ever had. I've worked hard in this campaign, and I'll work hard for you as a city council person. I'm the choice for progress, and I'm the choice for the people who care about Doraville's future. So I hope when you're in the ballot box, you're voting on November 7th, that you choose me, Joseph Geierman, when you're voting in District 2. Thank you.
Once again, thank you. As a manager, I've owned three successful businesses. I am currently Stewart Anderson DBA Cycle Racing. I've managed production control and quality control for three factories. Designed and ran the service department for Roswell Fun Machines, a preeminent motorcycle dealership in the Atlanta area. I was a general manager, as I mentioned before, for research and development for Beaufort Division General Motors. I've got 24, 26 agenda items already that need to be addressed and thought about. The only way we're going to move forward, and I hate that word, I see cliffs when I see move forward, is not by doing murals, it's by doing things that haven't been done. And I look forward to working for you and with you. Thank you.
Well, I want to say thank you to the Crawfords for putting this event together. I'd also like to thank all the residents for coming out. Some of the questions were tougher than others, and I do appreciate the ones that I was able to answer. This November is going to be critical. We have some people that are wanting to, I think, take a step backwards on the progress that we've made. And I know that, you know, the best progress to see would be, buildings already built out, but this is a 20, 30-year development plan that we're talking about for the GM site. Some other things to remember, though, is GM's not the only focus of the city. Nexus isn't the only focus of the city. Again, we have the Carver Hills redevelopment. Over in the Oak Cliff area, we have the redevelopment of a warehouse district that is going to be sort of a maker's space, I guess is one way to put it, of home construction and redevelopment activities. So those are services that residents can go to and be able to talk with professionals on how to redesign some of their homes, fix up their neighborhood. We've been doing a lot of good activity here in the city. We have a balanced budget. We have the required minimum 20% operating expenses. Those are good things to have. Those are things that we've been working on over the last five years of having reliable, trustworthy financials. They survive state review during the audits. If elected again, I look forward to continuing to do that, protecting the neighborhoods from things like traffic flows that come through here. And it's hard to believe, but GDOT will have these bridges literally dumping into our city, and it's sort of planned now and be prepared for that. Again, I'd like to continue seeing additional investments made into parks, trails, and also the police department, as we've done. So again, please come out and vote. I hope you'll vote for me. If you have additional questions, I have some cards in the back with my contact information, and I'd be happy to talk with anyone later on tonight or anyone else before the election. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much to the Crawfords and Dave for putting this on, and thanks to everybody for coming out. I'm glad to see so many people here that care about the city, because as has been mentioned here, apathy is a killer. We need people to stay engaged. I think it's a big priority for me to make sure that we have improved communications. We may need to spend some money to do it, but I think it would be worth spending money to have everybody be more informed about what's going on. It really is a critical time for the city, and I think that there are a lot of people, I think a lot of people have common concerns, and we just disagree on some of the ways to get there. Some of the things that people would like sort of conflict with each other, or they're not realistic. And I think we just need to be able to back up our plans with realistic things. It's easy to tear down what other people are doing. It's not so easy to come up with ideas of your own that you can actually realistically implement. So when you're talking to all of us during the campaign, please be sure to ask us the difficult questions and make sure that we can respond with a plan that sounds like it's realistic. Make sure that we know how to work well with others, you know, make sure that we can agree or disagree without being disagreeable. Be informed citizens, and I think that's, I think that's really important to do. And I look forward to serving all of you, hopefully, after January 1st. Please vote for me, Lee Flyer, District 3. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to just thank everybody, all the candidates for coming. I know it wasn't easy, and you were all good. And thank you, Dave Viers and Hart Blons.
I think you all got a lot of great candidates to choose from, a lot of great questions, thoughtful answers. They all deserve a applause.
And thank you, Chris, for coming and donating your time. We shall meet there.